All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, July 14th, 2020. It's a virtual meeting, obviously. You can see who's joining by way of the screen. We've got a number of items on the agenda today. The first of which is something I'm looking forward to this conversation. So the first one is about the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County. So Commissioner Parks, I'm sure you are ready to tee this one up.
Thank you so much, Madam President, Denise Dreehouse. Right, yes, I am excited. So a couple of weeks ago, we made the announcement and it talked about it in our staff meeting. And on Thursday, that Thursday, we had the public comment and it was interesting. We got good feedback and it looks like a lot of people are on board with that. Matter of fact, we have over 300 letters of support. So that's awesome. And I would like to thank all the people that worked so hard on this. I'm going to thank Jeff and Denise, the Hamilton County Board of Health. Greg Kesterman was just awesome. And I'd like to give special recognition to a lady that I've never met. Her name is Rebecca Stowe. Is she on here?
Commissioner, this is Greg Kesterman. She was logged in but was not able to see the list. So I just sent her a new link and she should be trying right now as we speak to come on.
Okay, well, I just want to give her special recognition because when we started on this journey and just through our conversations, the way that the Board of Health just stepped right in and gave us all of that good data, when I complimented Greg, he said that it was Ms. Rebecca Stowe who had worked so hard and put this awesome wording together. And I just want to express my appreciation to her and to also lift up to what a great team we have. So, so thank you, guys. We have the final resolution. I'm going to ask a couple of people to talk, but we will vote on it on Thursday. So if I'd like to have Renee Mahaffey from Closing the Health Gap to talk about this.
All right, Renee, are you?
I'm here, yes. I made it. I'm learning technology. Well, first of all, I just want to commend Commissioner Parks and, you know, Commissioner Dreehouse and Commissioner Dumas, but specifically Commissioner Parks for taking the leadership to declare racism a public health crisis and to do more than declare it a public health crisis, but to actually cite out specific actions that can take place to ensure that the dismantling of the systematic and structural factors that contribute to disparate outcomes for Black people in our county get addressed from a system level. I don't know how much more I could say about that. I think there have been declarations across our state, across many states. And some of the feedback that has occurred across the country has been, okay, so we're going to declare it, but then what? So this notion and importance of actually conducting a disparity study to actually look at the impact of legislation over decades and the impact of that legislation over decades to the Black community of our county is incredible and so much needed. I think it's very hard to dismantle something that you really don't then understand what the impact of a policy has been on the population of Black people in this region. I know that's going to be hard. I know that it's going to take, again, the tenacity and leadership of each of our commissioners, Commissioner Dumas, Commissioner Dreehouse, alongside of Commissioner Parks, to ensure that this beginning has this bang-up end, meaning that we look at what those disproportionate impacts have been across all of the departments and systems within the county and ensure that this declaration, this resolution has teeth in it that ensure that people of this region are going to see the changes in those systemic factors, in those systemic policies that will enable us to have a more equitable opportunity for growth, an equitable opportunity for business development, an equitable opportunity to live the lives that every person in our county deserves to have. And so I commend you, Commissioner Parks, Commissioner Dreehouse, Commissioner Dumas, for joining together behind this motion and this resolution that's going to change the lives of Black people in our county.
Thank you, Renee. So I see that Rebecca Stowe, she was on there. Hi, hi Rebecca. You're muted, I mute yourself. Okay, yeah, so you're still muted. Hi. Hi there.
Hello.
So it's such a pleasure to meet you.
You as well.
And I wanted to give you public recognition and to thank you publicly for you put your foot in this resolution.
You know, it's easy to work on something when you believe what you're working on. So when Commissioner Kesterman had asked me to spearhead it, it was with absolute pleasure. This is stuff that we've been working on and looking at for a very long time and it was just a true honor to be a part of it and this momentous resolution. So I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of it.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Dreehouse, Madam President, would you like to speak?
Yeah, so thank you.
So, yeah, so I'm passing it to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And I'll also pass along to Commissioner Summer O'Dumas in a sec. But, yeah, so thank you both for all the work that you've done. You know, we are poised here to create a seismic shift, I think, in Hamilton County, not only with the county commission, but in the community at large. And I think people are excited about it, they're ready for it, they're anxious to know, you know, how things are going to play out. You know, to your point, Renee, you know, it's not just a resolution, it's a resolution with action steps, with real things that we're going to accomplish. So people are fired up about it. So I join all of you in praising Victoria Parks, Commissioner, for putting it in front of us and I'll be looking forward to passing it on Thursday. So with that, Commissioner Summer O'Dumas, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to agree with what's been said so far. Renee said it really great, I think, when she said racism has been in crisis for many decades. What's different about this is that we're providing some structure in the resolution and also some strategies, or as she said, some teeth to dealing with this issue. So I think it's a great thing, I wholeheartedly support it and I'm looking forward to where we're going to end up with this resolution. So that's all I have.
Very good, great. Commissioner Parks, anything else?
I would like to have a word from Jeff Aluda. Because I want you to know that when we started this, so you know that he is our, Jeff is our ringleader. He's the ringmaster, that's what we call it, the quarterback, the guy in the huddle. And so when we huddled up, you know, and what was most important was that we picked things that we could actually do, things that would affect policy. And you know how we go, we go back and forth and Jeff was just, you know, he's just the rock. And I'd like to thank him and have him say a few words.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. Again, as was echoed earlier by Rebecca very eloquently, I just appreciated the opportunity to have a chance to work on this. It's a fantastic opportunity just for, not only for the community as a whole, but for this organization as well. And there's been so many things that we have wanted to do within the context of the organization that I think this gives us the ability to do and respond at this momentous period in time across the country, really. And so when Commissioner Parks came to me and asked for my ideas, number one, I was thrilled that she did so. Number two, we had already been thinking organizationally about some things that we had wanted to do to respond to this that just makes sense from an organizational perspective. Robert Bell and I, from the time he was brought on board, have talked about how we can better use the Office of Diversity and Inclusion here in Hamilton County to not just, while it's very, very important work, but to not just follow up on the metrics of procurement, but to better, better understand and better figure out how we can use that office to connect the work of the county into the community of Hamilton County and making sure that the work of the county is connecting to hard-to-reach and vulnerable populations in the community. So Robert and I said, well, this is a perfect time to use this as an opportunity to do that. And clearly, you could not have been a part of the events of the past several months without understanding the impact and the connection of the events to law enforcement. And fortunately, we have a very good partnership with the Sheriff's Office and I was happy to use that partnership to spur that conversation, to make sure that as the county, we continue to take proactive steps forward and doing what we can do to help address the issues that are out there. So, and fortunately, I can say, I know as of this Wednesday, I believe the sheriff is engaging in the first round of virtual training on the act of bystander training that is a part of this, of this resolution. So I want to thank our partners over at the Sheriff's Office for their help as well. So Commissioner Parks, thank you again for asking for the administration's thoughts and advice on this, we're just happy to play a role.
Thank you so much, Jeff. And I want everybody to know that when I was thanking Jeff for his work, he told me he would have done it for free.
I don't know if we're going to figure that out.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to hear from two more people, Greg Kesterman and then Robert Bell.
Very good, Greg.
So, hey Greg.
So, so Health Commissioner, not interim Health Commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
Greg Kesterman, congratulations again, Greg, on your permanent position. I don't know, it's a busy time over there, but congrats from all three of us.
So is it congratulations or sympathy?
That's exactly.
I've heard both, but thank you very much. And thank you for all three of your work on this important topic. I've been proud to be serving in the last five months to help move things forward, but particularly when this came up, I've been really privileged to help make this forefront of what we're doing every day. We know, as COVID has been occupying most of my time, we also know that COVID is impacting communities of our African-American communities disproportionately. And so it's even more important now that we continue to further this work and I look forward to the partnerships and I look forward to public health continuing to work within our communities, to help our communities be empowered to make change. So I just appreciate this opportunity. Thank you for having Mistow on. She is, as she said, very passionate about this and I'm lucky to have the opportunity to work with Becca on this as well.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. And now Robert Bell, the Director of Diversity, Inclusion and Equity. Did I say that right?
Robert, you said it right, thank you, thank you, thank you all. And I just want to put this in a larger perspective because Jeff and I have talked about this a lot lately, but racism as a public health crisis is the realization that bias and prejudice occur in several forms, individual, institutional, structural or systemic. And there's a movement nationally to address these type of issues with the called the Framework of Equity. And the word equity means justice according to natural law or right, freedom from bias and favoritism, and fairness. Equity mandates that a group's race or any other demographic category it belongs to should not be the main determinant of its success. The equity framework also promotes fair treatment, access, opportunity and advancement for all people, while at the same time, and this is important, works to identify and eliminate barriers that are preventing the full participation of some groups. Tracking equity is, and what you're doing with racism as a public health crisis is not an easy conversation or activity. It requires an understanding of root causes and disparities within our society. But doing this resolution is a major step utilizing the framework of equity where we can make real change in our society and it be sustainable change. So I'm just happy to be a part of it, thank you.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to kick it back to Madam President.
Okay, very good. So thank you all for being on the call, thank you for the conversation. So we will look forward to having this on the agenda on Thursday. The formal resolution will be in front of us and we will discuss it and presumably pass it at that time. So thank you all for being on the call today to continue the conversation about this. Good, Victoria, yes?
Yeah, yes.
Very good, thank you. All right, our second item is MSD Quarterly Financial Update. We've got Director Christie on and Mary Lynn Loder is on and Karen Ball is on, I see Joe Graff there too. So got a number of folks, Holly Christman, related to MSD. So Diana, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you and good afternoon, Commissioners. We're here today to talk to you about our MSD budget and give you an update with our second quarter financial data. I have with me from MSD both Mary Lynn Loder, who's our Chief Operating Officer, and I also have Tiffany Lawrence Glenn, who is a newer face to some of you. We introduced her, I think, back in December. She is our, she has stepped in as our Budget Analyst this year and is responsible for pulling together and really instrumental in pulling together all of this budget information and tracking this throughout the year. But today, we're going to, we have a presentation. I'm going to share my screen. Mary Lynn is going to take the lead on presenting, but why don't you know, we're all here to, you know, stop us at any time if you have questions and one of us can hopefully answer. And of course, the folks from the county are on as well. So let me see if this works and then I'll probably mute myself and let Mary Lynn go ahead, so.
And so as she, as Diana is getting that turned over, we, I just want to thank you again, Commissioners, for allowing us to come and present our second quarter. We did provide the first quarterly, our first quarter financial report in early May and it is really just the end of the second quarter, just closed really last week. So this is really, you know, hot off the press, we did a lot of work to try to get this all assembled for you so that we can give you a complete picture as best we have it right now for the end of the second quarter. So thank you again and we look forward to also other opportunities like this to present information to you on that. The next slide is really just myself, Diana and Tiffany. As Diana mentioned, Tiffany is a resource we have at MSD, she's really our Budget Analyst that gets a lot of these numbers together and then it's incumbent upon myself and Diana and all the superintendents to make sure that we are doing our best to spend the dollars that we have been allocated in the best way, given all of the needs of the utility. This slide, I just wanted to, you know, give you the whole picture and I'm going to really be getting into many of the details here in subsequent slides. But this table really represents the whole picture as it relates to really our requested budget from April of 2000, I'm sorry, August of 2019, what we originally requested, what you actually approved in December for 2020, the difference there. And then also going forward along the top column, a column there, the actual expenses are percent expended as well as are committed and then what our budget available balance is as of June 30th and then what our end-of-year projection is. The rows along the, under the first column there, the expense type, that lists our, all of the expenses and the categories that we have there. So the first light blue item is our personnel, our non-personnel, and I'm going to get into the details of each of these later on, but just, you know, real snapshot for you right now, our personnel is tracking with, to be within the approved budget and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a bit. Our non-personnel right now is tracking to be slightly over the approved budget and I'll get into the details on that. Then I also have here the fleet of VA, which are our capital outlays and I'll get into that and then our debt payment and then the grand totals are there as well. So again, like I said, this is really hot off the press, this is really early for a second quarter financial report out, but we definitely want to take advantage of this opportunity to get that information to you. So Diana, if you could advance to the next slide. So the personnel budget was approved at $59.9 million. Originally, we did ask for $2 million more in personnel dollars. However, we, based on a higher vacancy rate and kind of carefully managing that we have been allocated and not filling positions as quickly as maybe we had in the past in some cases, you know, if a position is vacated, we're really looking at each position, position by position, to determine, do we really need this right now? What is the best timeline to be able to try to stay within that existing approved budget? We also have had somewhat of a slowdown of filling personnel vacancies because of COVID. So, you know, we're happy to say that we are projecting to not need any additional personnel dollars at this time, based on, you know, and that's, you know, kind of projecting through the whole year, so that's some good news. And we'll, you know, continue to track this and let you know of any updates on that as we move forward.
Hey, Mary Lynn, what are those numbers off to the far left?
Sure, yes.
So those are different breakdowns of employees?
The, what, no, those aren't, those aren't numbers of employees, what that is, they're different divisions.
They're classifications of employees?
Different divisions. So for example, 410 is our Office of Director, 420 would be, and actually, I meant to have the codes with me, but I don't have them, but like 440 is our wastewater treatment, 450 is our wastewater collection, 460 is watershed operations, I believe. But those do relate to the divisions and I just don't have my cheat sheet in front of me.
Which one is, what's 440, the largest?
That would be wastewater treatment.
Okay.
That's our, that is our, the nine permitted wastewater treatment facilities that we have. We have over 240, I believe, employees that, you know, are tasked with every day of operating our treatment facilities and that's, you know, those are the people that treat almost 100 million gallons of wastewater on a daily basis.
So, hey, Mary Lynn.
Sure.
Can you give us the list of what that is?
Yeah, I sure, I sure can. In fact, I've got it right here, I can give you, so 410 is Office of Director, 420 is our Wastewater Engineering Division, 430 is our Business Services and Administration, 440 is wastewater treatment, 450 is wastewater collection, 460 is our Regulatory Compliance and Safety Group, 470 is watershed operations and 480 is our sewer backup program. And I can also give you a, you know, a list of those as well.
One last question related to this, so 420, the Engineering Group, is way under 50% compared to the others. Why is that so low?
Diana, do you want to chime in on that at all?
I believe, and actually Tiffany might be better able to address this, but I believe that is because the dollars are allocated between both capital and operating and it's, I think it's just the timing of when those allocations are made. So it reflects low right now, but by the end of the year, it would be projected at the dollar that we requested, allocated for that division. So I believe that's it. And if Tiffany misspoke, feel free to correct me. So that means that, yeah, so I believe that, again, it gets allocated based on the projects that, and engineers that, you know, some of their labor is charged to the projects and that's all allocated, but the way it's allocated and the timing of that is done throughout the year and I believe it's just not reflected the full amount.
Yeah, and I think that that's absolutely spot on. So, you know, and obviously the engineering that we have, they're working on a lot of capital assets and so we did set up a fund starting this year with the Board to have all of the, a lot of that time that engineers are spent working on capital projects to just hit that fund as opposed to, you know, having to hit all of the projects. But we can follow up and make sure that that is, that's the case, that's a great observation.
Well, I just want to make sure it's not an indication of a slowdown in engineering work related to projects, that, so that's what prompted my question because it's so dramatically lower than the other ones.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Next slide is just a little snapshot of where we stand, Diana, where we stand on overtime just through pay period 13 and allocated all the way through the second quarter. But again, it's just an opportunity to tell you, show you where we are as a snapshot. And so at this point in time, year-to-date, we're tracking pretty good for overtime usage at 46%. And as you would anticipate, overtime is largely dependent upon weather conditions, catastrophic issues that we may have to address with overtime. And so while we are on target right now and not projecting any concerns with overtime at this point in time, that could change with, you know, the next big storm or the next several storms. So we'll continue to kind of keep you, keep you posted on that. The next slide is a slide that kind of gives just an overview of our non-personnel spending through the second quarter. And again, this is broken out by all of the divisions and actually, this gives a little, on the slide, it does have the break, you know, the And actually, this gives a, your little, on the slide, it, it does have the, the break, you know, 410 O D, 420 wastewater engineering. So here's your, your reference in terms of the fund codes of what division it relates to. And so right now, we, again, originally, right now, we're projecting a potential deficit of about, about a million dollars within non-personnel. And there's many different factors for this. And this is really just a, a, an opportunity to, to let you know that we are, we're monitoring it, we're tracking it. And originally, it was funded at approximately $4 million under what our original need or request was. And, and when we put the, you know, the need and order together, we knew that there were some things, costs that were increasing this year, like for example, utility costs, as well as some of our chemical and, and hauling costs. Some of our contracts went up. But also we've had it, we've had additional expenses as it relates to hauling sludge to the landfill this year because we've had some outages due to some equipment that has gone down. Some, and sometimes we've had to bring, put, bring the incinerator down. That's resulted in higher costs to the landfill. We also have some improved safety initiatives that we employed this year. And this was projected at the time of budget. We had projected to, we, we have a contract now with Cintas. And we were originally anticipating to have flame retardant, flame retardant uniforms for our employees who are at risk for having an electrical interface, so to speak, in their daily work. After doing a full electrical assessment of risk, we determined that there were more employees that really had that potential risk. And so we expanded that uniform, those safety protocols in the uniform for 180 employees as opposed to just the original 60. We also have some critical training that we need for our electrical employees, as well as some of our instrumentation folks. And so that's some additional trading costs. Lastly, we've had, this past year, we had to change insurance carriers for insurance of our fixed assets. That alone was an increase of about $200,000, as I recall. And, and then coupled with some additional costs of COVID, overall, we're looking at a projected deficit of about $1 million within non-personnel. And again, I just want to emphasize that, you know, we are working to the best we can within the existing approved budget. However, we knew when we were starting out the budget for 20, you know, putting it together for 2020, we had $4 million more need than we had actually approved. Those needs don't necessarily go away. We try to manage the budget within what's authorized. But, um, you know, some of them, like I said, just don't go away. So we're trying our best to keep them down. And we're bringing that information to you now as, you know, these are projected increased costs that we, we do have this year. We may need to have an additional appropriation towards, as we get closer to the end of the year.
So when it, related to this one and to the other chart that you provided with personnel, it might be helpful for us to, because you, you were talking about the budget in the context of the request of the allocation, the difference. I see the differences highlighted in bold red. It might be helpful to have the budget for the previous year also on here because that is also contextual. So that I, I hear what you're saying. And I, and I understand that there was rationale for the request and there was also rationale for what was budgeted. And so what, what's missing then is previous year so that we can see, you know, how it tracks. So could, in the future, could you provide that column? I guess it would be before the requested budget, it would be previous year budget.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly provide that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, the next slide, if we can move.
Really quick, I'm sorry, it took me a second to unmute. I just wanted to add to that we can provide that in our written report because we did not complete that yet, preparing for this. So our written second quarter update, we'll be sure to include that.
Okay.
That reference. Thank you, and I'll advance it.
Yes, thank you, Diana. Okay, let me just get caught up with my notes. Okay, and so this is really just a breakdown of the additional, you know, kind of, the, this is still non-personnel details. And just to give you, uh, so it's based on the same information that was on the prior slide. But this is really just pulling out some of the, the nuggets, if you will, of, of total what we've spent across all of the divisions. So we've spent through June 30th, $20 million, 20.6 million dollars, or about 30%. We've encumbered about 42% of the, the dollars in the non-personnel. And so right there, that's, you know, approximately 72% is either spent or already encumbered. And, and then committed, we have about 72% are, are dollars committed. In terms of uncommitted, and that is about 18.7 million dollars. And so while that's uncommitted, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's, you know, we don't have a need for money. We, we do have a need for those dollars. We have those needs identified. We just haven't encumbered them yet. And it could be because it is, you know, something that's needed in, say, it could be something that's needed in September or October. And, but yet we just have not actually committed those dollars yet. But we are anticipating all of those dollars to be, to be spent in 2020. So the next slide is, I just wanted to give you a little snapshot of where we stand with regards to our sewer backup program through the second quarter. And to date, we've really only had one significant storm in 2020. And that one storm was March 18th and 20th. And before that storm, we only had about $168,000. While I say only, it's a lot of money for cleaning homes after a, a backup. That storm alone, though, then jacked that number up over $1 million. And year to date, through 630, we have spent about $1.2 million just on cleaning alone. The majority of the, the expenses in our sewer backup program this year to date has been on the installation of, of the contractor cost of installing sewer backup prevention devices. This year alone, year to date, we've, we've protected 57 properties and have had, you know, contact with about 100. This is a, a report that we update on a monthly basis. It's available online on, at the link located below. And we continue to track SBU spending. And, you know, as you, as you know, and as you provided in the past, when we get into those situations where there are, you know, more storms than we have funding for, then additional allocation is sometimes needed within the SBU program. And we, you know, aren't necess, we can't really project what that is right now. But right now, this is kind of where we are at. And so year to date, the expenses for this sewer backup program has been about $5.2 million.
Yeah, this would be another one where previous spending might be helpful because I know we've always allocated money when needed for this program. I think just in the context of how we're having more of these severe weather events, it would be interesting to see kind of the track of this amount. In fact, if you could provide maybe not only the last year, but maybe even more than that, because there is a trajectory up here. And I just think it would be helpful to have a visual of that.
Sure, and actually, the link that I have on the screen is a projection that goes back. If you click on that link, it'll take you to a spreadsheet that goes back to, I think it's 2004. Yeah, it's 2004. So we do have that available. I just, but again, the, the problem with the spreadsheet, it's, it goes, it's so tiny, it's hard to, to read it all. So I just want to take a snapshot of, of 2020. But that, that's the link to that spreadsheet as well. Okay, so then the next slide, if we can advance that, Diana, are there any other questions on SBU before I move along? Okay. All right, so then the, the next slide that is, is our capital outlay in this. So that is our OTEA and fleet, OTEA stands for our Office Technology and Equipment Allowance. And this is something that we, we do include in our operating budget. It's also, then we also have a line item here for fleet. So let me handle fleet since that's on the, the top here. The, the fleet replacements that we are, the allocation that we got, we're working within additional budget. So it is, you know, less than we, we asked for. We totally understand that, not asking for more there. We just had to, you know, we're going to have to just use the, use the, the equipment, the heavy equipment, the vehicles that we have longer. It may cost more to maintain them, but that's what we're doing. OTEA, Office Technology and Equipment, it was reduced in half from what we originally asked for. It was originally requested at about $3 million. The allocation was 1.3. We have had to make several deferrals in that, in that fund in order to stay within the approved budget, which we have done. And, but the one thing we want to bring to your attention as it is an interest of both, I think, the city and the county, and that is a deferral that we've had to make on, it's a heavy equipment and a CDL driver simulation. And it's something that really has been indicated to be a real good investment to help improve the training and the safety of workers who are using heavy equipment and cranes and, and, you know, heavy, heavy trucks that are on the road. And it's really proven to be a very effective way to train people and make sure that the folks who we are putting in trucks, as well as the folks that maybe the engineer's office are putting in trucks, are very competent and can meet certain conditions before we actually put them on the road and, and put them out in the, in the public. And so the cost of this simulator is about $580 million. And it is something that I think Administrator Ludo and former city manager Patrick Dehaney have talked about of an interest to actually advance with like a, a shared use of this simulator, maybe the engineer's office and MSD and maybe other public works entities. And so we, we, we did really want to try to do that this year. We had to defer it. We don't, we, we've cut and had to defer a lot of other things with our ODA. So if there is a desire from the county's perspective to try to advance that simulator, you know, as a, a tool and a resource to partner with another county agency and state, we would probably need additional allocation for 2020 of about $280,000. We are planning to put $300,000 in our upcoming 2021 budget. But we just want to let you know that, you know, we're not able to do that this year because of the, the reductions that we've made.
So, Mary Lynn.
Yes.
How, how is training conducted at this time?
You know, so it's, it's, it's not with anything like a simulator that would actually put somebody in a room to, you know, work on a, like a, you know, an actual, almost like a gaming system is what the simulator is. And it's, it's very hands-on and stuff. What we do now is we almost have to, you know, have somebody drive in a truck with somebody. They, they might have taken a, a course at one of the Oaks or something else to kind of get them competent. But it's more of sort of just traditional training as opposed to doing something that's as, you know, hands-on and high-tech like a simulator.
And you did say $580 million.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Did I say million? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's not. See, it's such a savings already. It's 580,000. Sorry about that.
Okay, yeah.
That'd be one heck of a simulator.
How long has it been deferred just from last year?
Um, we've, we did have it in our budget last year. We did want to do it last year too, and we couldn't. And so it, it has been something that we've been, you know, kind of developing the, 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 you know, the discussions and stuff. It's probably been on the radar for at least two or three years.
Thanks.
Yep.
And so, so Mary Lynn, um, you know, to, to share it with the, so, so when you have here that it could be shared with other city, county agencies?
Correct.
What, like Butler County or?
Well, I think we, I'm, I'm thinking more of Hamilton County and the city of Cincinnati. But it's a potential that it could be used as a service, like, you know, sold as a service like that as well. I think that was one of the ways in which we were thinking about it too. And it could almost pay for itself by, by considering it to be sold as a service for others to either come to it. Or also, it's something that could be put on a semi-truck and it could actually be driven to different locations. So for example, then MSD has it for the first two weeks of the week, of the year, or the first two weeks of a month. Then maybe it goes to the engineer's office for a few weeks. And then it could go to downtown, you know, our guest street facility and then potentially a public works or something like that. So it is, it is intended to be a mobile unit.
So that would be good, you know, where it pays for itself. And I don't know, it possibly come up with a profit.
Possibly. So, you know, if there is interest in that, we could, we could certainly try to explore that a little bit more in terms of trying to put together like a model like that. That would, you know, that, that would almost, you know, in time sort of pay for itself or at least offset the cost of it. But we really do feel like there is a strong benefit to having something like this, again, for, from a training and competency perspective.
Well, with, you know, within a conversation like that, I think it makes sense. What, what would you say, Jeff?
Thank you, yeah, I, I agree. I think that if we could put it into like a regional service kind of approach, it would be very cost-effective and benefit a lot more folks.
What do you think, Jeff Ludo?
Yeah, so the city manager and I had a discussion about this, must be about a year ago. And I think where, where the conversation stopped and we just hadn't picked up on it is if we could find a way to leverage this amongst other large county and city organizations, Department of Transportation and Engineering, the County Engineers' Office, some of our folks in Planning and Development have CDL requirements as well, and periodically hire people who require CDL licenses. So I think it's, we left it at the stage where we were attempting to cost out the, the benefit of this from a pro and con perspective and just seeing if there, as Mary Lynn indicated, if there was the ability to maybe not pay for the entirety of this and get a return immediately, but at least get some money back as, as a service over time. And at the same time, make training a lot more efficient for the folks internal. So we honestly have not picked up, up on that since. So if the board is interested, we'd be happy to work with MSD to, to look at this a little bit more and see if we can do that analysis to see if there's a, some, if it makes sense both from an internal training perspective as well as a cost perspective.
So what, what do you think, Stephanie? Commissioner, some more.
I'm, I'm not able to make a, a decision, informed decision about that. But thank you for asking.
Well, if you can provide more, you know, like, like Jeff said, we could try to put together some more discussions, you know, with the administration and maybe come back with something as, you know, another staff meeting update or something like that.
Well, and, and maybe, you know, we look at this in the context of the budget for next year and make sure that we've got enough information to understand what this is. And so, you know, maybe if, if we need to do it sooner, that's fine. But we certainly, at the very least, would want to have this conversation as we look at next year's budget.
Well, in, in order to do that, I do think it would help to have at least reached out to some of these organizations like the County Engineer, Department of Transportation Engineering. So we can work offline with, with MSD to develop a communication plan for that and at least reaching out to these other entities to see who is interested and what the volume of training might be through this, just to make sure that it makes work out, makes sense. Obviously, water works as well would be, would be one. So I'll talk with Holly after the meeting and we will, we'll, Mary Lynn and Diana will circle back to you and see if we can put together a, a plan to do some outreach on this.
Sounds good, thank you. The next, the next slide is also related to a capital outlay, so to speak. And I just, it's a slide, this slide and the issue is something I just really want to bring to your attention. And I just, it's a slide, this slide and the issue is something I just really want to bring to your attention. It's not something that is part of the operating budget, but it impacts the operating budget because the fund, it is the funding that we use that addresses the emergency repairs or high-risk assets that we have. And so like an emergency repair could be a cave-in and a, a cave-in, a physical cave-in of, of the, of the ground and the sewer that caves in a roadway or caves in parts of a neighborhood. We've had these, several of them this year, actually. We have, you know, had some big ones in the past, you know, in the last 10 years. We, one that always comes to mind to many is when the, the metro bus actually came in a street and literally, you know, was stuck in a hole near the zoo. Fortunately, we haven't had anything that significant this year. But, you know, these things happen and those are emergencies that happen that we use these, these capital dollars, but more in the operation when we're dealing with just emergencies that come up on a daily basis. And so these are typically also more costly to repair because failure has occurred and, you know, that level of service is not able to be performed as that sewer was originally designed. So this is really just an FYI for you to let you know where we stand on, on the wastewater collection allowances right now. And specifically, the one I want to highlight for the purpose of this discussion is the third one on this, on this chart right here. And it's the prioritized wastewater collection allowance. And this was originally approved at $12 million. And the graph shows a breakdown of how those dollars have been spent or planned to be spent in the next couple of weeks. As a reminder, 2020 was the first year that the board authorized the prioritized wastewater collection allowance. It was previously split out into three different groups. It was split out into emergency sewers, high-risk sewers and building sewers. And having them, having it all in one allowance is much more efficient and easier for us to manage and get work done. So thank you for, you know, putting it together in one, one allowance. It's been much better. The issue that I want to alert you to is the fact that in the first six months of this year, we've had to address emergency failures totaling about $9 million already. So in order for us to reduce the need for more funding in 2020 for this allowance, we have already reduced the number of crews that we're using to make repairs in, in not only this allowance, but the first one, that's called the main sewer allowance. And we will continue to make adjustments to the work that we're doing to try to, you know, reduce the impact on a, a potential need for more money in 2020 for this work. But in 2019, the allocation in total, I think, was, for the three allowances that it was last year, was $17 million as opposed to the 12. And so I think the other point to make here is that the, the fund, the prioritized wastewater collection allowance really can be thought somewhat similar as the sewer backup allowance because just as the sewer backup allowance is really based on a storm event and kind of the emergencies that we have to deal with when they come up, that's kind of how the prioritized is as well. Really based on the, the type and the complexity of the, of the emergency failures that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. So again, there's no action for you to take at all on this right now. We just wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of, of what's going on and where we're having to make some reductions in the amount of crews that we have on some of the more planned emergency repairs that we're doing and distribute some of that work a little bit differently. But we may come forward with an additional request on this in the, in the future. Any questions on that before I move on? Okay. I will, the next slide is just a slide on debt service. And with regards to debt service, there's really nothing to report. You're on target within the existing budget. So I'll just move on to the next slide. And that is a projection of our 2020 revenue. And this is as of May 31st. Our projected revenue is the, the middle column there. The 2019 is provided next to that on the right-hand side. And this again is just year-to-date revenue. And as you can see, the difference from 2020 to 2019 is approximately $6.2 million. And at the time when we put the budget together, we were already projecting revenues to be reduced by about $1.2 million. And that was related to an industrial user that relocated outside of our area that had considerable surcharges as well as usage. It was one of our highest users. The, the comparison is also not entirely an apples-to-apples comparison of 2019 to 20. And that is because in part the holiday, this Fourth of July holiday and the, the start of the year, and ultimately the 2019 calendar has one whole week's worth of revenue collection than 2020. So we think that generally that's probably between $2 and $3 million right there. And, and, and also there's been a slight decline in the amount of water usage in 2020. So those factors are most likely result, resulting in the six, the, the decline we're seeing. Plus the fact that, you know, we also started tracking this as related to just COVID weeks. When we compare, you know, March 2019 to 2020, project that forward, we're seeing a decline specifically in those months. And really this is just to provide you a snapshot of, of, of what we're seeing on that. And we'll continue to track this and get dates included. And that was my last slide. Next slide is just for questions. And with that, I'll just, you know, ask Diana or Tiffany if there's anything further they want to offer or if there's questions that you have specifically, we can go back. So thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Mary Lynn. Do we have a graph, and I don't know if I missed it, that is a side-by-side of revenue and expenses?
Uh, we don't have it here.
I hear you saying revenue's down, expenses are within budget to a point. Not always. It would be helpful maybe to see revenue and expenses coupled so that we know broadly, you know, how the year looks.
Okay.
Cause I don't remember.
We don't have that in this presentation.
Yeah, maybe we could get that next time.
And again, the one thing I, I guess with regards to our, our revenues, it just, all revenues go to one fund. We don't allocate those revenues to specific divisions.
No, that's fine. Just a comparison though, or a side-by-side, I think would be helpful.
Okay.
Anything from anybody on the county team?
Uh, this is Joe. I just, I want to thank MSD for sharing this information. We had a really good meeting after first quarter and we're looking forward to getting a second quarter report, as Diana mentioned earlier, and having the opportunity to talk about that.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
And Madam President, this is Jeff. I'm sorry, my, my, my Zoom is being a little jumpy today. So I'm sorry if it's coming through awkward to, to folks, but it's hard to, it's hard to navigate. But no, I just also want to thank MSD for the presentation. Thank the county team for, for their involvement. Happy to see that overall it looks like the, we're on track and on pace with, with the budget, with a few question, a few question marks here and there. But overall, it looks like we are, we're on target, which is great news. A couple of things that came up in the report that we'll follow up on. Number one is the, the simulator project. And as well have the county team work with MSD as well on the issue of main sewer versus building sewer realignment. That's been something the county's been interested in for, for several years. I know we worked, as Mary Lynn said, last year to try to regroup the funding there a little bit so it could be a little bit more flexible. But certainly want to make sure that we're putting the dollars towards where there's the highest risk. So we'll follow up with that as well and hope that, you know, as we always do, that we don't get hit with storms that are gonna, that are gonna force a, an increase in the SBU budget as well. But that again is dependent upon the weather. But again, just thank, want to thank MSD for the, for the presentation. We'll continue to work with them as we close out the second half of the year.
Very good. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just a few comments. First of all, I want to thank you for the information. I appreciate that. And also the presentation that was given. This is the first times, I, I received this information late yesterday afternoon. And I really, and I'll, I'll be a broken record with this. Well, I, I don't feel like I did, was able to do my due diligence on this packet. This is a financial update from MSD and we're talking about millions of dollars. And I heard earlier that you turned it around very quickly. I certainly appreciate that. I just wish that maybe we had deferred your presentation till maybe next week so I could be, you know, just more informed, be able to give the questions and ask the questions and the review that as a public official I need to do. So I'm sure that I will be asking some questions next week as I look through this detailed information. And in addition, as I'm looking at the information, I keep seeing, and I've said this for almost two years since I've been here, information needs to come quicker. And also I brought up about the logo, City of Cincinnati. And it's not about being pious or having an ego or anything like that, but we are leading the charge of MSD. And we were told, I don't know, seven, eight months ago, we can add the county on there. And I keep looking, City of Cincinnati. Well, why are we even considering any of this? So I don't know what the hesitancy is to add our logo or something to show that we are not only part of it, but we're leading the charge. And so I'm going to ask again, after almost eight or nine months, if we can add on the reporting process, Hamilton County. We are involved. We're leading the charge. So I'm going to ask again that that be done. And I was told that it would be done. So, so right now, the information is very detailed information. I'm a very detailed person, but right now it's really Chinese to me because I have not been able to even evaluate it or even ask the appropriate questions. And I would hope that we can get this on our website so our residents can take a look at this because it is a very sensitive subject, MSD as we know. And it's millions of dollars that we're talking about. So in no way do I not appreciate what you guys have done and what you have compiled together. I just need to see it sooner. And I need to see our logo somewhere on there to show of our involvement. So that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. So what is the next time we'll have MSD at a staff meeting? Are we, I, I've lost track. Are we doing these monthly or less than that?
I think we were, well, we were initially planning on doing at least quarterly updates. So we could do these, with COVID-19, obviously things took a little bit of a, got, got derailed a bit. So if there are additional questions, we could certainly follow up with another presentation, just to update this presentation in a month or so, if the, if the board is, is okay with that.
What is the preference of the board?
No less than a month. No less than a month.
Okay, so let's, let's have you guys back in a month then as a follow-up. How about that? And Jeff, maybe we'll have additional information related to the simulator. I mean, it's an interesting conversation. So why don't we start to work on that a little bit too and see where it takes us?
Yeah, if we have an update by that time, we'll certainly update the board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify about the frequency of the meetings. I know that the request in terms of budget updates was quarterly, but we had talked about coming back monthly, I thought, just on other topics. And so I have a staff meeting scheduled on July 28th unrelated to the budget, but more on a project specific. And so I've been talking, you know, with Holly in particular, about getting, you know, regular scheduled updates.
Great.
So that, we really appreciate that and we look forward to that next presentation on, on that particular.
All right. So are you saying that you intend to come back on July 28th?
My understanding is we were scheduled for that date. It was a project-specific issue, but obviously we could add this on. So if that, you know, or answer questions about this.
What is the project?
It's a, it's in design for Mount Washington related to sewer backups.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, yeah, very good. Then, yeah, why don't we, we'll make, we'll put them together. How about that?
That's what I was thinking. Be easy. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diana.
All right. So I, my staff will note that and make sure that we get that on in two weeks. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for being on.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, item number three, item number three and item number four are both related to our CARES Act funding. And I know there is a dashboard that's very close, if my understanding is, to be released. Because what it, and what it will do is highlight for us the CARES Act funding. And here it is. And we, remember, we had designated as a board four, or four different buckets for that funding. And we have started to move that funding out into the community as quickly as we can, especially related to small business rental assistance. We've got testing coming online, local jurisdictions. So I've asked the administration to give us a visual, like a visual dashboard of the, the money, the dollar amount that we designated, but also the status report as to how all that's going. And so my understanding is very close. I don't think it's quite ready yet. But these two items are related to that, to that funding source. So the rental assistance is first. And actually, we've got a resolution authorizing the award of one of these contracts. So Holly, I'm going to let you walk us through how, you know, how this is going and what we need to do today.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse. Good afternoon. First, if you don't mind, the dashboard is very close. I want to thank Brian Waltsley with Planning and Development, who is working tirelessly to get that information updated. We had a quick meeting this morning on it and are finalizing a few things. So hopefully we'll be seeing that soon. And, and secondly, the, I'm very excited to talk through the rental assistance program. I'm grateful that we had both Michelle Baltz with Hamilton County Environmental Services and Joy Pearson with Community Development helping with that project. So if you don't mind, I would like to turn it over to Michelle, who will give you an overview of the rental assistance RFP process and where we stand right now. And Joy, of course, answering specific questions and talk about how this supplements our existing rental assistance programs. So if you don't mind, I hope you all know Michelle Baltz with Hamilton County Environmental Services. We're grateful that she is able to spend some time on the CARES Act programming and providing her expertise.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll go ahead and get started. We, we put out the purchasing issue, the RFP for the rental assistance and utility assistance program on June 8th. And we opened that on June 22nd. We had seven proposals. This was for three and a half million in funds to get the rental assistance out there. We have our first contract up today, which is with the Free Source Food Bank. We expect to have two more following this, once we get the agreement settled. The Free Source Food Bank one is for $522,300 and they expect to reach a minimum of 200 households with those funds. There's certain criteria that applicants will have to meet in order to be eligible for the funds. One, they have to reside in Hamilton County, obviously. They have to have experienced a documentable decrease in their income due to COVID-19. They have to earn 80% of the area median income or less. And then they have to show proof of past due rent and utility. And so we list in the agreement the ways in which they can do that. So this is in addition to existing rental assistance programs that Hamilton County has. So I'll pass it over to Joy and she can explain a little bit more about those.
Thank you. The existing contracts-
Thank you. The existing contracts that we have for rental assistance are eviction prevention and a three-way contract with Legal Aid and the Community Action Agency. We have a contract in place from the 2019 funding that included an additional $75,000 to plug a gap between April, May, and June. So that total for 19 was $225,000. And then we've recently, you recently awarded $225,000 for 2020 funding. And so altogether, it's $450,000 that's been allocated using Community Development Black Grant or Community Development Black Grant COVID funds. The average assistance in the past for the last 11 months was $1,175. And that assisted 93 households. We anticipate with the additional $75,000 to assist another 64 households. And then the additional funding for 2020 should cover, if the average lays about the same, 192 households. So altogether, we are assuming that the, or projecting will help between 350 and 400 households using the community development funding. Now, that funding can only be used for residents in the 41 participating communities in the county and not in Cincinnati. So the funding that is being allocated today can be used for residents anywhere in the county. So that's, that's a big difference.
And Commissioners, if you don't mind me jumping in really quickly, the three and a half million that we have allocated for this rental assistance program in total, at minimum, we anticipate it will help 1,400 residents.
My next question, Holly. 1,400? Thank you. So to be clear, there are three different contracts that are being worked on. One of them is ready to go, and that's the Free Store Food Bank one that's in front of us today. The others are not ready to go, but instead of waiting for all three to go at the same time, we wanted to try to get this money out the door quickly. And so that, so we are being asked to move on one resolution, knowing we've got two more that hopefully will come Thursday at the earliest, but, but hopefully soon. So Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of questions. Michelle, you had mentioned about the free stores getting 500,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's 500, $522,300.
Okay. And then you said they're going to feed 200 families?
They're, they're going to provide rental assistance and utility assistance to a minimum of 200. Now, that is with the, if, if every one of those 200 families asked for the max of $2,500. But we expect that families won't all ask for the max. So say, one family asks for 1,000 and the next asks for, you know, 1,200, then you've, you know, reached two families with that. So they'll probably reach more than 200.
Well, that was my question because I was going to ask, is some of that money for administrative costs also?
It is, yes.
Okay. About how much would you say?
I can look up really quick and tell you exactly.
Yeah, okay. That would be great. I don't want to hold anything up. And, and I'm going to say, none of this information is on the website for people to review. And so I'm just really, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to say it because not being able to have constituents come in and maybe not being on Facebook Live, they can get on the website and read this stuff. And I think it's very important that we, we do that. The resolution itself, Madam President, when did that come? Because maybe I just missed it. I haven't seen it. No?
I didn't, I didn't have that until, I'm going to say, late last evening.
Okay.
By Holly, I think she said.
Last evening.
Okay, okay. So, you know.
Well, so, go ahead.
If we can get this stuff quicker. And of course, this is so important. I would never stop anything like this. But I just, you know.
Yeah. And if I could, Madam President, Commissioner Summer Dumas, it's a, it's a, it's a good question. And it's one that we're balancing, especially as we're in summer session and the need to get these programs ramped up quickly. You know, had, if we had preferred, we, the administration could have just held it and put it into the regular cycle for it to be on the agenda a week or two weeks down the road, in which case it would have been obviously publicized, it would have been on the website. Looking to balance the pros and the cons of this, we felt that it was better just to get this onto the board's agenda as quickly as possible, so that we could discuss it, have, have an open public discussion about it. If the board had desires to, to wait and have some more public comment, we could certainly do that. I do recognize the, the complication here. We want to be as transparent as we possibly can. At the same time, the nature of the summer schedule has it such that we, we're in a little bit of a bind on that. So we try, we're trying to get it to use quickly as we possibly can, have some public discussion about it. And because of the urgency of it, recommend passing. But we will try, we certainly will continue to try to get stuff to the board as quickly as we can, so it can be listed where possible. And where not possible, at least ensure that it's on a staff meeting agenda, so we can talk about it publicly.
And just to comment on that, Jeff, of course, we don't want to hold stuff up that's so important, such as these items. But I have to be able to get it, to read it. I mean, I was up late, you know, during, so we are all, we know with this COVID has done, and it's really changed some things. So of course, there's no, no thought to stop any of this. But I need to at least get it to read it and not just, not rubber stamp stuff. So I understand.
I completely understand where you're coming from. Absolutely.
Okay.
So is there a desire then to hold this till Thursday? Or are you?
Of course not.
You're comfortable doing it today? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. Michelle, did you?
Yeah, I had, I had an answer to Commissioner Summer Dumas' your question. $500,000 of that is going direct assistance to clients. So the other amount of $22,300 is salaries, benefits, and then a system that they need to use to be able to track it.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So, well, let me just ask the most obvious question then next is, when do we hope to see the resolutions related to the other two? And can we have them in advance of the Thursday meeting?
Well, we, I just got off the phone with Cindy while the MSD presentation was going on, who's our prosecutor. And she has resolved one of the issues. So we're going to be able to get that signed and together. So we definitely will have one of the other two. I don't think that we'll have the other one by Thursday, but I, I'll try to get it together as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Joy.
So, so are there any other questions or comments, Commissioners?
I have none.
No comments. Thank you.
Okay. All right. In that case, I am going to move to approve of the resolution related to rental assistance and the Free Store Food Bank.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah. And let us know as soon as you have the others ready to go. Thank you. All right. The other item is a Small Business Relief Grant update. So as you know, this round went out a while back. And we all three had quite a bit of input on, you know, with a target, really. We were trying to target really small businesses that had not benefited from any federal dollars. And so we have information about how it went, who was helped. And all of this in the context of having a second round go out here, hopefully in the near future, and tweaking the parameters, if we so choose, to capture a few more businesses that were ineligible during this round. So Harry, are you going to walk us through how this went?
Holly's going to introduce it, I think, and then I'll join in.
Thanks.
Good afternoon. Just waiting. We have a brief update for you on the Small Business Relief Program. My internet in my office is a little slow, so I can't see the screen. I'm hoping you can.
We can, Holly.
Okay, great. So just as a, a quick, just setting the stage, make sure we're on the same page. As you know, we did, our first CARES Act program was to develop and implement a small business relief program. As you can see on the slide, the eligibility requirements that we had for this first round, which as Commissioner Dreehouse mentioned, included really focusing on those companies that did not receive any federal assistance already. You may remember the conversation. We wanted to make sure we, we helped those that just couldn't access or didn't know or get access to the federal funds. We didn't have any requirements on type of business. We allowed any business, any business type that met our criteria to apply and potentially be awarded funds. You may remember, we were unsure of how many applicants we would receive. So we did have a very simple first round application that was just check yes or no, if you self-select, to see if they met our criteria. For those that did, we were then potentially going to do a lottery between, oh, between the businesses 10 and under and an over 10. We were going to do a lottery. We did not have to do a lottery. So anyone that applied and made it through our initial screening was then asked to upload documents to prove that they met our criteria. And from there, we had a team at HCDC just confirming that they did, their documents were in line with the criteria. It was a, a great process. You've heard me talk about the team that was involved in this. We had a whole slew of folks from HCDC, Community Development, Brigid, just a whole, a whole team of people helping out on this project. And I think the first round went well, very well. We learned a lot. And we're talking right now of, based on those learnings, how would we change the program to make it more effective for us as well as for the business community. Before we go into that, though, I did want to turn it over to Harry. First of all, thank you, Harry, for all of your work. And he's going to go through those, the numbers now of who has been actually signed the grant agreements that are required prior to releasing the money to the businesses. So with that, Harry, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Holly. And thank you, Commissioners, for having us in today to talk about this wonderful program to help our small businesses. As you can see on the screen now, these are the statistics that have come out of the approved agreements. We had 219 businesses get approved. As you can see, 188 of those businesses have returned the agreements and signed them, and also provided a routing number for their bank account. So those 188 were successful, not only in being approved, but also signing the agreement and, and getting the money sent to them. So all of these 188, the money has been sent by what they call ACH transfer. It's an electronic transfer of the, the grant to their bank account. Of the, the 31 that have not received it yet, there's some of those that we did not have a good routing number from them. So we were reaching back out to them to find out why that bounced back. I think that was about eight or nine of them. And then the rest of them haven't returned the agreement so far. But most of these should be, I know some have already started seeing these in their bank accounts. A lot of them will see it later this week or early next week. And then those last 31, we will, when we close out, we will finish the program. As far as statistics, of the 188 that have been approved, 43% of those were minority-owned businesses. 47% were women-owned businesses. 32% of those were both minority and women-owned businesses. 6% were veteran-owned. The total amount that we have dispersed so far is a little over $1.5 million. The average, and I'll go back to when we were in grade school, when you talk about the mean, the median, and the mode, the mean, or the average, as we usually call it, was $8,005. But obviously, the most requested grant was for $10,000. And then those people that requested less brought it down to 8,000. And then finally, as Holly mentioned, we really wanted to target these to those smaller businesses, those minority and women-owned businesses that didn't take advantage or didn't receive actually other federal assistance. So I think we did a good job of targeting those companies. 95% were either 1 to 10 employees, and a very small percentage were larger than that. So as Holly mentioned, we're going to come back to you with a round two, with some suggestions on some changes to make the application process easier on the business, maybe to expand the use of the, the grant program, more businesses might be eligible with the new guidelines. We will reach out to our partners that we worked with in the beginning, groups like the African American Chamber, the Cincinnati USA Chamber, Ready, Urban League, et cetera. We will obviously come back to you Commissioners for your input before we finalize the guidelines for the second round. And then we will try to get out some more funding through that second round. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot one other thing. This is the map that shows the distribution of the businesses across the county. So not only did we target those small businesses, but it's well represented throughout the county. A lot of different communities were able to take advantage of it. There's some concentrations in certain areas, but, but as you can see by this map, it was really across the county that businesses benefited from the program.
That's great.
So.
Thank you, Harry. Thank you, Holly, and Brigid, and the others that worked on this program. We, I think we were all very excited about this program and remain excited. Can you anecdotally give it, give us a story or two as to, you know, we, I know tried to hone in really specifically on a certain kind of business, very small, those that didn't have the ability to, you know, win an award from the federal government through the PPP. We especially wanted to hit minority and women-owned businesses. If, if there was a barrier that you saw, or anecdote, like I, in my office, I received a couple phone calls. I had one guy call me. He's a small business. He's, they had like two employees over on the west side of Cincinnati. And he was not able to qualify because he got $1,000 from the federal government through the PPP. And he asked me if he could turn in his thousand and try to get 10. And I, and I said, no, you cannot. But anecdotally, that to me was like, oh, I wonder, you know, maybe we should think through that, right? Were, were there any other stories like that that you can share with us that would inform the second round?
Sure. I'll add to that specific example. The, the SBA, early on, gave out what they called cash advances, or just small amounts to try to tide over businesses, and then often turn down some, a lot of those businesses for the larger loan. And so unfortunately, we, we weren't aware that a lot of those businesses were getting those small grants or cash advances. So we have suggested one of two proposals. One is to allow those smaller cash advances to be allowed in terms of, we could still fund them with the understanding that they understand that they cannot use two different sources of federal funding for the same thing. So they would have to use the money for different things. There's also the possibility that we could just allow anyone who got a PPP or any EIDL loan into the program. But that's a, a little more where you're getting into a much larger loan and the cup, the possibility of duplication of benefits is greater. But we're, we're open to both. But I think the first one was probably, would be an easier one to just kind of add and would open it up to a lot more businesses. I think another reason why some were rejected was the 35% loss of revenue. We thought early on that that would be a low threshold. But we did find that there were a number of companies that did not have a 35% loss that wanted to benefit from the program. So we are recommending reducing that to 20%. I think of the documentation, some people did not have a lot of the documentation. So we're requiring less documentation in this next round without making sure that we're getting the stuff that we need. One other suggestion that we're going to float out there is that because the governor and the state health department closed down a certain number of businesses, it's pretty obvious that they, these businesses were impacted by the closing. And the major stipulation from the federal CARES Act is that we can document that the businesses were impacted by COVID-19. So we feel like if you were shut down by the governor or by the state's health department, that you were obviously impacted by COVID-19. So we might not even require those companies to prove a loss because they obviously were impacted by being closed. So that's another way that I think will open this up to a lot of other businesses as well. So those are some of the examples of things that I think that we're proposing to change to make it easier on the business to apply.
Okay, great. All right, Commissioners, questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam President. Great job, guys. I know you worked very hard on it. And I like those innovative ideas as it relates to the loss and how to prove your loss. And those are great ideas. So I'm excited about the second round. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Um, Harry and Holly, I, I know how hard you guys worked. You did a great job. We were really excited about this. We had $5 million. What, we used, what, 1.7?
Yeah, about, it's going to be about 1.7 for all of the ones that were approved.
So I, I think that that's interesting because we know that people have a need. And so, you know, let, let's talk about how to, I don't know. And so, you know, let's talk about how to, I don't know, spread the word more. I know that that was quite the challenge though. But we did a really good job because what we created it and got it out in what, about two weeks? That was magic. So, so, you know, with this $5,000 and so now we're still working on the same five, right? But so.
I thought it was 10 million.
Well, we were going to do five for each rollout. So, so with that five, they only used 1.7. So, um, yeah, so I'm looking forward to it. And thank you for all of your work and ideas and dedication to this cause.
Commissioner, I did forget to mention that we are also suggesting increasing the revenue from 1 million to 2 million. So that will open it up to more businesses as well. So that's another possible change that we'll recommend.
Oh, so, okay. So the size of the business might change.
Because we heard anecdotally through some of the businesses that some of the restaurants that you think of that you might think have less than a million dollars in revenue, had more than a million dollars in revenue, like even small neighborhood restaurants. So we felt keeping it a little bit larger might open that up for some other businesses that were not allowed.
And I, I think Commissioner Parks brought up a good idea as far as, because we know the need is there. And I don't know if you can use any of our CARES Act money to advertise more. I know it was on the radio and things like that, but I absolutely agree with her that there are people out there that still didn't know about it as much as we tried to let them know about it, so.
I know that we're working with Community Development to update lists on business associations to make sure that they get out all the business associations as well. So we will try to even improve upon the marketing of the program that we did last time.
Well, we'll have more time too.
Yeah.
So that, that'll be helpful. Okay, and, and, yeah, that's great. All right, well, keep us in the loop, would you, as you move forward? Because I, I know that we had, you know, we're on the ground quite a bit and we're listening to folks and would love to participate in the criteria to help capture a few more businesses here moving forward, so.
Definitely.
Thanks, thanks for all the work. Hurrah. And maybe next time, we can hear some stories from the business owners about what the impact really was, you know, when you receive these dollars. What does it really mean to a business owner? So if we could get that, I think that would help inform, you know, how to move forward and what the impacts are. So, all right, very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
Thanks. Okay. So the next item, Jeff, is a summary of the proposed by leaves that I guess are going to be on our calendar for Thursday. And you want to run through them in advance.
Thank you, Madam President. At least some of them maybe. So this, it really gets back to the question from Commissioner Summer Dumas earlier, is as we are in the process right now in summer schedule and we're working various projects, some of the timing of the conclusion of this work doesn't mesh up directly with our procedures for getting stuff on, on the agenda. So we may have an item that's ready to go by the time of the meeting this week. We could wait, but the urgency of some of these projects are such that we want to make sure that the board has the opportunity to take them up as quickly as possible. So I just want to go through some of these and talk about them a little bit. Some of them are still not certain that they'll be on as a by leave on Thursday. But I just want to make sure that just from the, again, from the perspective of transparency, that if they are, we've at least have some, we've had at least some discussion. So the first relates to another CARES Act program. We've talked about testing and expanding our, our program of testing in the community. About a month or so ago, we put out an RFP to significantly expand the testing capability in the community in Hamilton County. We received four applicants for that program. We are currently in negotiations with one specific applicant and one provider. Again, the end, the end result here is going to be a significant increase in the testing capacity throughout Hamilton County. It is, will obviously take place in late summer, fall and winter of this year. It's going to focus, as our RFP requested, on vulnerable populations, on first responders, on congregant care facilities and on addressing outbreak containment and hotspot containment when that, when that occurs. And it will also focus on the strengthening of our data network and the flow of information between the private health networks and our public health infrastructure as well. So that not only are we responding to this crisis, but we are helping to build a backbone that will help us into the future as well as we have additional issues from a health perspective that we have to deal with. So again, we're not ready to act on anything yet today. I'm hoping that we will be ready to bring a contract forward by Thursday. In the meantime, once we finalize negotiations with our chosen provider, we will provide that information to the board as quickly as possible and make sure that that entity is prepared to be here on Thursday to provide a presentation, again, with the goal of being as transparent as we possibly can, but at the same time recognizing the criticality of this is something we want to get rolled out and ramped up into the community as quickly as possible. So we'll keep the board posted as we move forward. Again, we're hopeful for Thursday, but I just wanted to make sure we had the opportunity for some discussion and a heads up on this prior to Thursday's board meeting.
Okay, so as we roll through these, if there are any questions, please ask them as we go.
And agreed, and again, there will, given the, given the magnitude of some of these, we certainly expect that there will be opportunity for questions and discussion on Thursday. And to the degree it's a contractual relationship, we'll make sure that we have, to the degree possible, the vendor there to provide, on any of these, to provide some context and to answer questions from the board as well. The second item relates to a lease agreement with the SPCA. As the board is aware, we are currently in negotiations with the Claremont, Claremont County Animal Humane Society on subsuming the, the operations of our dog warden function. As a part of that, we will need to enter into a lease agreement with the Greater Cincinnati SPCA. That lease will be coming forward on Thursday. I know John is working with the SPCA right now and finalizing just some final terms on that. I think as, as we've previously reported, the lease will be a two-year lease with three option year extensions. John, I think it's $219,000 per year will be the, the annual cost on the lease. There'll be some capital equipment that needs to be purchased as well. We anticipate that coming forward on Thursday also in advance of hopefully working out the final contract with Claremont as well, which would come hopefully a couple of weeks down the road. John, anything to add on that?
No, I think that covers it.
I had a question. Yeah. On the equipment, was that $100,000, John, on the equipment that they wanted from us?
It's, um, no, it's, it's about $300,000 worth of equipment.
$300,000, okay.
And that's not in the lease. That will be a separate.
That is in addition to the $219,000, okay.
Right, and the equipment is one time.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, commissioners. The, the third item on your agenda relates to the Over the Rhine Special Improvement District. This is something the board was briefed on in a staff meeting several months ago. I, I think it was at the beginning of this year, but honestly, I can't remember if it was late last year or early, or early this year, but relates to stakeholders in Over the Rhine looking to put in place a special improvement district similar to what exists in the Central Business District. The board heard a presentation on this. I think there, the main hang up from the county's perspective was that there are two buildings that would be included in this special improvement district that are already included in the Central Business District SID. So the question was whether or not the board wanted to sign on to be basically with these two buildings, which is the Alms and Depke Building as well as the Park House Garage, to have those, those facilities essentially ducked part of it, two different special improvement districts. So we have been working over the course of about the past month with the stakeholders in the Over the Rhine Special Improvement District and the CBD District to agree that these two buildings would be pulled out of the CBD District and placed into the Over the Rhine District. There would be one overlap year. And we are working right now on the procedures on how the Over the Rhine Special Improvement District would refund that overlap year such that there would not be, at the end of the day, any real overlap. I've been told by the individuals leading the, the Over the Rhine SID that this is possible, but they just don't have the mechanics yet on how exactly it's going to work. So what I would anticipate bringing forward on Thursday would be a resolution where the board would authorize me to sign the petition for the SID for Over the Rhine once an adequate procedure for eliminating that overlap year was presented. So once I, we're working on language on that right now. Once I have that language, I'll forward it to the board so you can see it in advance of, in advance of Thursday. But I thought that that would be an adequate solution to, number one, ensure that the, the Over the Rhine District can move forward with the county's support. But secondly, that the county is not paying any more than it should into, into both districts.
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you, commissioners. If there's no questions, item number four is one that, we're getting into two now that I'm not certain are going to be coming forward on Thursday. I just wanted to give you a brief update. The first is the Parking Facility Development Agreement. You'll recall the very last meeting of last year, we entered into a term sheet with FC Cincinnati as it relates to the development of parking infrastructure. The intent has always been to boil that broad term sheet down into a final development agreement. We've been working on that. Again, this is one that where COVID-19 got a little bit in the way of everybody finalizing this as quickly as we would have liked, but we've turned our attention back to that and would like to get this in, in front of the board as quickly as possible. We'll continue to update the board on the status of, of those discussions as we, we refine this development agreement. It is possible that we could come forward on Thursday, but I think we still have a couple of nits that we need to work out before we're ready to present something in earnest to the board. So that's item number four. And number five is another one that I'm not certain there'll be any formal action on, but relates to a, a tax increment financing or residential incentive district in Colrain Township. This is a project up in the, in the North Ridge area of the township, an area right off of Sovereign Road where they're looking to construct 65 single family homes. This has been an area of the county that, that, that we, we've had several departments of the county work on plans related to the North Ridge area of Colrain Township. I think some of our Community and Economic Development Assistance Funds have, have gone to help with planning activities in this area of the township. So there is a strategic interest that the county has here in making these, this project work. The township is looking to apply a residential incentive district, which is essentially a residential TIF in this area. The county, the, the main reason I bring this up today is not just for this specific project, but the county has never had a formal, a real formal policy of dealing with and responding to TIFs or residential incentive districts when they come in in terms of whether the county wishes to negotiate or object for the purpose of obtaining any compensation. We've always dealt with them on an individual basis. For example, the board will remember the Montgomery Gateway Project. It came up where we worked directly with Montgomery. So we are working with the township on this. Holly has been in touch with the administration of the township to better understand the project and understand the project's cash flows. So we look to get the board a recommendation on this prior to, to Thursday's meeting as to whether there's any recommended action to take. But more to the point, and the bigger issue I believe is, from a broader perspective, I would like to bring forward to the board for your consideration, not on Thursday, but at a later date, a broader policy to deal with these residential improvement districts and TIFs, where the board and where the county has the ability to recoup revenue from them. It's not the right thing in every instance, and it may be the right thing in other instances. But the issue is right now, we have communities out there doing project-related work with an absence of a real county policy on this. So they're developing their cash flows, they're developing their project with only historic information to go on in terms of how the county has, has historically dealt with these. So I think we need to be a little bit more proactive in terms of getting a policy out to all the communities in the county to say, if you're contemplating this type of development tool, here's how you can anticipate the county is going to react to that. That just adds some certainty into the economic development equation for any community and for the private developers doing the work. So we'll work on this particular one, get the board a recommendation back before Thursday. But just wanted to signal to the board that we'd be coming back with a broader policy recommendation on this as well.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I applaud that approach because I do think it gets us, I, I know I'm a little on my heels sometimes, not knowing one project from the next, and I know they're different from one another. But an overall county policy as kind of a directive, not only for us, but also for the communities, so they know what to expect from us, I think would be really helpful. So they're not flying blind and we're not flying blind. Because I, I think historically, we haven't gotten many of these, but we seem to be getting some now. So I think it would benefit all of us to put something on paper. So thank you for taking that approach. And commissioners, any questions about this one?
Not that one specifically.
Do you have questions about any other ones?
Well, Silverton, we, did I miss that one?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I, I had provided some information to you through an email earlier that listed these agenda items. And there was one relating to Silverton. I don't anticipate that coming forward on Thursday, but I can go ahead and brief the, the board on it. This relates to the utilization of CARES Act funding to offset costs for services related to sheriff's patrols in, in Silverton. It's an allowable use under the CARES Act according to the Treasury guidance. It will enable Silverton to respond to some revenue shortfalls that they're seeing because of COVID-19. We're working with Silverton on an approach and a resolution to memorialize that approach. We've worked with the prosecutor's office and the sheriff on it as well. We were hoping to have it ready for, for Thursday, but I think more likely it will, it will come up to the board on, at the meeting of the 30th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Jeff, does that impact any of the other relationships we have with sheriff patrols in different communities?
We have, I believe there's one other community that has reached out to us to express some concern as it relates to their revenues and sheriff patrol contracts. We have not had further discussions with them at this point. But no, at this point, that, that would be the only community that, that we would be dealing with in, in that manner. But to the degree there were issues with any of the other communities who receive sheriff patrol services from the county, the existing of the CARES Act dollars and the ability of, of a community to apply those dollars to public, for public safety purposes does provide a model for how a community might continue to, to fund police patrol services in their community, given the, the availability of that federal aid.
Right, so some of those dollars are the dollars that were directed directly from the county, right? And then some from the state as well.
Correct.
So we're starting, okay. Okay, all right, good. Any, Victoria or Commissioner Parks, any questions?
I just really like the idea of creating policy for TIF. I, I think that's smarter. I'd, I'd be on board for that. And that's all, thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, Jeff, thank you for clicking through those and we'll look for some of them on our agenda on Thursday. Thanks for the update. I do think it's really helpful to have this conversation during a staff meeting so that, again, we're not surprised when we see something on the agenda and we don't feel like we've, we're up to speed. So thanks for doing that.
You're welcome.
I think what was great about it is that Jeff sent a summary in advance. So I was familiar with a lot of that, so.
Yep.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
So that concludes our regular agenda other than the executive session. Is there anything else that we've missed? Jackie's like, no, we're good. All right. In that case, I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property at competitive bidding or the sale or other disposition of unneeded obsolete. or the sale or other disposition of unneeded obsolete or unfit-for-use property.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yeah.
All right.